All right, can I please have a motion to open the work session?
Salute.
Second, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, welcome to our work session, Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023. So let's take it away with the exciting topic of water service line inventory.
Come on, I said it was exciting.
That's a great intro, thank you.
All you Bart, all you.
So here to give you an update, inform you about a requirement that we have, and that's to create a water service line inventory. And it's a material inventory of the service lines. So the goal is to see if there's any lead service lines in town and make people aware of them and to minimize exposure to lead. There's a revised letting cut rule that's being talked about, it's issued. And the requirement under that is for us to have a complete inventory of all of our service lines by October 16th, 2024. So it needs to be completed and submitted. Information passed down within the Department of Public Works has been that there are no lead service lines in town. This has all been communicated verbally. We're now being informed that we need to document this. So this is good reason for the inventory. Unfortunately, we've gone through all of our records. We have curb box cards for every water service in town that gives us information on where the shut off is located, but it does not list the materials of the water service line. We've done a bunch of research on engineering files downstairs in town board meeting minutes to try to figure out a date when copper service lines were required. It was always discussed that all the lines were required to be copper in town, but we again had no documentation. So through the research of all the records, we've been able to come up with something that as of 1951, all the water service lines in town at that point and beyond were required to be copper. Our research isn't done, we're still looking through records and hoping to find something older because that lifts a lot of weight off of us on getting into every house in town. So we're actually now at 1,130 homes that we need to get into. So there's about 5,500 service lines in town, so about 80% done.
So Bart, quick question. So the 1,100-ish nap are all homes that were built before 1951 that you're trying to get into to determine what the water lines may have?
Yes.
Okay, and then if you determine that somebody does have lead pipes, who's paying to replace those?
So in the town of Newcastle, the water service line is owned by the resident from the home all the way to the water main. And in some communities, the initial part of the water service line that's in the street from the main to the property is owned by the municipality and then the resident picks up from there. But within Newcastle, the resident owns the water service line all the way to the main.
Because you know, the question is gonna come up that well, if I let you into my house and determines I have lead pipes, not that that's good, but then there's an old, then there's a burden on that homeowner to replace them now they probably should for health purposes anyway, but they may not want that financial obligation.
Right.
Will there be restrictions on them being able to sell their home while there's still lead pipes?
I'm not aware of any restrictions. So this information, once it's complete, is required to be public information. And I think, you know, this will be a bigger issue just when you buy a home, the lead paint, you know, there's all kinds of disclosures on that. So I think as people are aware and, you know, building inspectors, this is something that they'll be checking when people are buying homes. And like I said, it is required, the inventory to be public information.
Also, I have a question.
But what if people don't want to let you into their home?
Yeah, what if people refuse?
We can't make people do that. But again, like I said, it's public information, it's required to be. And there's an annual requirement to update the inventory annually. And for homes that we are not able to get in and verify, they will be on the inventory that's public information as unknown, which is not a good thing.
It's gonna be just as good as staying in line.
Right, exactly.
But also, even if they're to let you in, they don't have to make the change, right?
They don't have to.
Right, so.
But then does that get documented?
Has anyone denied you? Has anyone denied you?
I'm sorry.
Has anyone denied you?
We haven't, well, except for one little instance when we had a couple people go out without our public, you know, outreach beforehand.
It hasn't really started.
We haven't really started, that's why we're here, to talk about it and to make people aware and talk about the methods that we're gonna use to communicate this information to residents.
So I have a question about that for problematic pipes, would there be a backflow issue?
I don't understand.
Well, you know, for some houses, we have backflow prevention requirements and inspections that are required so that there's no commingling of water coming from wells, for instance. So if you find that there are lead pipes, is there, would there be a similar concern with the commingling and possible backflow issues?
There would not, there would not be, no, not in most instances.
So the lead pipes only affect the water coming into your house through your service line and the water that you and your family is drinking?
Correct.
And what are the circumstances under which a backflow issue comes up?
So those are for fire sprinklers, for irrigation devices and for pools.
With this water on both sides.
Correct, yeah. And those aren't like, so with a pool, if somebody leaves a hose out or if there's a pump, that's a pump is always a concern because if somebody connected pipes the wrong way and they have a pump, you get back pressure water into the public system. So the backflow preventer stop stops that from happening.
Oh, so that's a completely different situation.
Yes, yeah.
So what are our border guys going to do and when are they gonna start doing it?
And how are we going to disclose this to the public so we know, yeah, people?
So that's what we're here to talk about and have some ideas. So we could do an article in the newsletter. The one thing we'd like to do is to have a letter approved and send that to the residents since we have a list of them. One of the things we wanna try not to do is overwhelm our office with calls and people from the 80% that we know we already have the information on. So that's why we're gonna try to be selective about it if we can. And we wanted to start by sending a letter to the residents that we don't have the information and asking them to call and or email and set up an appointment so that we can come and get those.
Yeah, it's a great first idea.
Water line, yeah. Yeah, and then, you know, what will follow up, we can do door notices as well. But we really wanna try to do the letter first.
And do you want the letter to have them set an appointment or is the letter just gonna say, we will be by in the next?
So the letter, yeah, the initial letter would say, you know, contact us to set up an appointment. We're hoping to get a pretty good response. And then the ones that don't contact us, we would probably go knock on the door and or put a door notice on their homes.
And all of our employees who will come for this appointment will have town identification badges?
Yes.
And when you make the appointment, would you be told who the person is, what car they would be driving, that they're gonna be coming in a town of Newcastle vehicle? They're gonna be, the person's name is so-and-so. And so that, you know, homeowners can verify that whoever it is who's coming into their home is in fact the person who's supposed to be coming into their home?
Right, ordinarily, we wouldn't provide a name. We would just provide the appointment and let them know that it would be a town vehicle, that it would be in uniform and that they would have identification.
Okay.
I don't think you have to give a name, things change.
Yeah, I think as long as they have town identification, more importantly, a town car.
Yes.
You know, that's got the logo on the side.
And uniforms, we're just getting our new uniforms in for our staff.
I was gonna ask you, but the uniforms are gonna be ready, but sure.
Yes, yes. That's helpful.
It seems like you did plan that one too.
Yes.
And the schedule appointments.
So do you want to do the article in the newsletter too? Or do you just wanna start with the letters and see what you do?
I think we should, I think we should. I think we should, because then people will look at it.
I'm kind of worried.
I'm kind of worried.
The 80% that, you know, the commingling, what about?
Maybe, maybe the articles.
Well, you say.
Yeah, I wanna know why.
You'll hear from BPW if this is a concern.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, just let them know we don't need to.
You may be contacted, you know.
You will be, but if this is a concern, you will be otherwise.
Yeah, it's sure effective.
One other thought I have is that if we could put a list of the ones that we need on the town website so that they could go look as well or if we would want to hold off on that.
I don't know about that. I don't know about that.
Could we have a list of that?
Okay.
I don't know about that. I guess if people wanna call. Yeah, but then you're gonna get a lot of local calling here.
I think we just let them know if they don't receive a letter, they don't need to worry about it.
Okay, so we'll make sure we include that information in the newsletter.
I wouldn't even use the term worry about it because.
Well, not worry, but they don't need to.
They're not impacted.
They're not impacted. Okay, so are you gonna draft that letter?
Yes.
I'm confident my house is on the list.
Yeah, I'm running minus.
I'm running minus now. Fifty-one, right?
That's the date we have now, we're hoping to find some documentation.
My thirty-seven.
Mine's thirty-nine.
My thirty-seven.
Yeah, there we are, okay, well, you have three.
You have three.
We will let you in.
All right.
Anything else you need to talk to us about?
Well, that's it, we'll make, we'll wear that and let you know the ideas we have and how to get the word out.
Okay, well, um, will you, um,
Thank you, Bart.
you'll let me see a copy of the letter before it goes out?
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
And I will forward it to the board so that you guys can see it first before we approve it and send it out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Thanks, Bart.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Bart.
Thanks, Bart.
Sorry, I have to go.
Before I go, I'm gonna.
Good idea.
Okay, moving on to a proposed local law amended with town court regarding.
Very simple local law, it's page 21 in the packet. It just eliminates the time restriction so that the clean pass parking restriction would be in effect throughout the day. And I'll let Jill speak to what's driving the change, but.
You're no dick.
Very funny, very.
You are no dick, he's trying to be dick.
I know, I just kidding.
Be a dick.
So we did receive a lot of complaints and questions from residents saying they go and they're trying to, you know, charge their cars and there are cars parked in all the hybrid and electric car charging spots that are not charging cars. Some of them are not even electric cars that are parked in those spaces. So that's really where this is kind of coming from.
That's exactly where it's coming from. So what we've done is we've taken a look at the local law and we have eliminated the time constraints that were preventing us from being able to properly enforce these obligations.
It's not the hybrid spots, it's just the charging spots.
It's the charging spots, yes.
That's the, that's the.
So if a car is parked in a EV spot, that car needs to be charging. Needs to be connected, needs to be charging. Otherwise, please find another spot because that probably put up any structures. They're all functional, they're all operational, we'd like to pay it worth it.
Can you get that taken?
After we approve this, we will be able to.
Okay.
I sometimes, I don't know if it's a joke, I don't know if it's serious, but I think to myself, we have this policy to encourage people to get electric cars to leave at the station while their gas cars are driving around all day.
Something about the optic of having Hummers parked in the, you know, clean pass section of the parking lot that just really.
Right, you can flip it around and say, you park your car here with proof you have your other car's an electric car, that's what gives you this pass. So your gas cars.
Maybe they're driving two electric cars.
Could very well be, we just need proof of one. I don't know the changes are coming, but just seems huge.
You know, I could tell you that SAAP has broached that subject with us more than once. And I remember having this conversation with Steve Walk, probably eight years ago.
Yeah, I think, I think I was wrong.
You know, it's gonna be less of an issue because all the cars being produced now are starting to be electric cars or at least electric hybrid cars. So I think in the next few years, you're not gonna see too many gas cars at any point.
I don't know.
I told you. Not new ones, not new ones. Not new ones.
All right.
All right, so we're gonna set this down for a public hearing. All right, um, what date? Christina, did we give this a date?
Um, we didn't give it a date.
But. How about the sixteenth?
I can imagine to hear a contribution.
Yeah. Okay, well, we do, okay, okay.
All right, Jill, do you wanna walk us through the other ones you've administered items?
Yeah, so we've got retroactive approval for payment claims, check stated on April 26th. We've got the authorization to approve East of Hudson operation and management payment. I don't remember how much it was this year. It has to do with our, yeah, I remembered it. It has to do with our obligations under the East of Hudson funds for, what is the mitigation?
Fosters.
Fosters, thank you. Mitigation, and because our, the projects that we have in town don't don't eliminate our required baseline, we end up having to borrow from other people's projects and basically we have a contribution, we're working on additional projects. We're hoping that they're gonna start soon and we'll be able to have projects.
I think this should have wrote.
Right.
When that gets done, that'll put us in the posse.
Yeah, we're hoping, so that we don't actually have to pay cash and be able to.
And that's been reimbursed the last few years by the county. I know that it's not guaranteed ever, but the last few years it has.
Can I ask a question on that? The invoice is dated February 17th and the due date is today.
They know what they're doing.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not, I think it's not that an issue.
So the next is authorization to include a daily rental fee for town parks. So this was in response to Kiwi Day Camp, which I understand they may not be using Getney Park anymore.
I heard not.
Yeah, for pick up and drop off.
Which pick up and drop off.
They're in DeChicos parking lot now.
Well, hopefully, let's DeChicos know, that's all I say.
That's what I heard, I heard that they'll be doing drop off and pick up at DeChicos.
Does DeChicos know?
I have no idea, I planned on inquiring the next time I was in DeChico.
Yeah.
The parking lot is usually pretty full.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were just talking about the daily rental fee for town parks.
Yeah, it's going to be a different one.
Kiwi Day Camp is not planning from what I've heard.
And was it meant to be for town parks or for the parking lot?
They're getting away from Getney and now they're gonna be in DeChicos parking lot?
I heard.
I had asked, I had reached out to CCSD and they are doing, whose work had no shortage of schools, so it is not available today. It may be available to them in the future, but it just doesn't available yet.
Did they happen to tell you if, what the payment agreement was?
They told me that they, they don't allow camps to pick up and drop off at their schools.
Interesting.
I thought so.
I'll, I'll figure out the conversation later, yeah.
So do we know, so they don't want to now do this license agreement, is that?
I, I, you know, I don't know, I actually hadn't had conversations with them beyond it. I was gonna take them, you know, after the town board approved it.
I mean, I could see them picking up at DeChicos parking lot in the morning, it's early, dropping off at three o'clock in the afternoon.
At five o'clock, but still.
It's gonna be a mad house.
Of course, not better.
No, because even though.
Yeah.
But I'm wondering, do we wanna have a policy in place for the future in case this pops up again that, you know, should anybody ever wanna use? I don't know, I don't know, you know.
Yeah, no, I mean, I would actually.
I think there are day camps that would use central locations and if it's, do we want a policy where they have to charge, we charge for that?
No, I think that the daily rental fee for the town parks, we should go ahead and approve. And I think that anybody who wants to use our parks in addition to the daily fee for the park usage, that, you know, they're gonna have to speak with the chief of police and, you know, make sure that there's proper police presence to ensure the safety of the kids and traffic safety.
I mean, just to be clear, what if Kiwi is using DeChico? It may be, it may be crazy over there.
They may find that they need to switch back.
I know, the problem is that they're state rooms, so it's private property and state laws and we can't really stop them from doing that. That we can't stop doing, but, you know.
DeChico.
The DeChicos may, right.
Pay, payments concerned.
DeChicos may not like.
I can't imagine.
Right, so they may come back and.
It's a private, custom private, it's private property. So I can't imagine they can just choose to, when the bus is there.
That's not our problem right now, but.
No, it's fine.
Yeah.
So the question is, does the board, in light of this information, do you want to approve the Kiwi camp parking license agreement anyway? I'll forward it to Kiwi if they're interested in using it or if at any point.
Well, if it's with them specifically, then it doesn't make much sense to do it until they want to.
Yes.
But as far as policy goes, we could have a policy, right?
This would be, this would be.
But if they're not.
I think find out if they wanna utilize the Getney Park for those purposes, then.
Okay. All right, so I'll take this.
Then we can approve it next week.
Right.
But I still think we should add the parking lot rental.
Oh, yes, mhm, yes.
And I just wanna be clear that it's for the parking lot, this isn't for the park, right?
Right, it's the parking, yes.
Yeah.
Next was, we'd more close, we'd like the block party, we'd like the authorization to close their street for a block party.
Are we invited?
You guys.
They did get approval from all the neighbors.
Yep, they submitted a petition, they did all that good stuff.
Yeah, I saw.
Authorization to disperse funds for the fourth annual Hutter Cost Human Rights, we've got a revised resolution. They did not put in the fees for the gift cards, so we.
Right, they did a few dollars more than what we had approved for gift cards.
Um, next, authorization to declare surplus in auction vehicles and equipment.
For the record, since 2016, it's been about $210,000.
And surplus vehicles, yeah, right. And the next is the resolution in support of the efforts to save the Hudson River. I have a question.
So I, I put that one in because, well, there's, as you saw, there's a rally at the weekend about that. But, you know, as you know, the Indian Point Nuclear Plant is being decommissioned and Holtech International, the company doing that, has proposed to release radioactive waste into the Hudson River.
Terrible.
Now, they did agree very recently to postpone doing that until they can have further discussions, but it's still terrible. Whether it's now or two weeks from now, it's still a terrible bit of.
Where did the resolution come from, by the way?
So I'm gonna tell you, so.
But I'll give you two of them. There are two different ones, there's one, the resolution.
Right, we're just going in, we're just going in.
Lauren.
Yeah, Lauren wrote that one, but, and, which I appreciate very much. But I'd like to consider this one, the one I sent around today.
The one we're letting you see, okay.
And this is based upon both the Westchester County Board of Legislators and the Rockland County, I don't think it's called the Board of Legislators, but the same thing. They passed a resolution very similar. So what I did is basically culled the two together. There were a few mistakes, so like the Senate bill had been proposed and that was referenced in both. There's also an assembly bill that was promulgated actually by Dana Levinberg, who was, used to be the supervisor of Austin, now she's in Assembly. So she, I put in the Assembly Bill. And frankly, the Westchester County Board of Legislators, their resolution did not talk about how they didn't want this to happen, but it didn't talk about the fees that are included in the Senate and the Assembly Bills. Rockland Counties did, and I actually think it's very important because to their point, the fees that are in the proposed legislation, the Senate bill and the Assembly will basically say, you're not allowed to release radioactive waste into the Hudson. And if you do, we're gonna charge you $25,000 per day for the first violation, $50,000 for a second, $150 after. And the thought being that for a company that's making a lot of money off of this, that's just, they could say, okay, that's just the cost of doing business. And I personally think, and as did the Rockland County Board of Legislators, that we're going to say that we think while we approve those bills and the, the concept in those, the State Assembly Bill and the Senate Bill, that these, these wastes should not be released in the Hudson. We also think that those proposed bills should be amended to increase those fees so that they're actually prohibitive instead of just a mere cost in doing business for a company that wants to get this done and release those. I happen to think these fees are low.
Is, oh, I don't really have a good feeling or understanding of what their plans for discharge are. Is it, I mean, is it like a daily ongoing thing? Is it a defined period of time? I don't want any of it in the Hudson. But I'm just, as I'm trying to think out the costs of.
I don't believe that they've, they've disclosed exactly how it's gonna happen, which is why they postponed doing it until they could come up with a plan. There was no plan as far as I'm aware of.
I don't know that we have to work out the cost, I mean, this.
No, all we're saying here is that it's low.
I think what we're trying to say about these amounts are low, they're not primitive.
Correct.
So I think that.
Right.
So the resolution part of this, there's a lot of whereas clause is saying, we oppose the plan to release over a million gallons of contaminated water into the Hudson, that we urge the passage of the Senate bill and the Assembly bill to prohibit the discharge of any radiological agent into the waters of the state and urge the governor to sign that legislation. But when drafting and finalizing the legislation, the fine should be substantially increased so they can have an actual deterrent effect instead of simply being considered the cost of doing business. And that we demand that all relevant agencies actually do something about protecting the public safety of the environment instead of just press releases.
So but, but some of the language, some of the language is verbatim from these other resolutions?
Yes.
Because the one thing I would note is that this resolution, as opposed to the shorter one, has some factual statements there, and I'm assuming that they're correct. But for instance, you know, there's been no specific reporting of the radion nuclei contents, pre-release filtration of the isotopes has been presented as a solution, but there's no verified safe level of these isotopes. So these are very, you know, factual scientific.
So I confirm this was correct, but it's also in both the Westchester and the Rockland resolutions.
As long as it's there and we're all in agreement, as long as it's there, put a phrase out, as long as it's there in Rockland and Westchester and something you can use as a sample and we're all in agreement, I have no objection.
The only thing I added that was not in either of those was the New York State Assembly Bill.
That makes sense.
Right, I think.
I just have a couple of grammatical notes in the very last.
Oh, sure.
The town administrator is she? And, and we, and it says Pete Harkum, New York Senator and New York State Senator, there is just duplicated on either side of his name. Oh, Paul and Nancy, New York Senator, Pete Harkum. Yeah.
Yep.
Also, the, the resolve clause above that. I think that the language is kind of awkward towards the end to say, let's see, the town board demands that all relevant offices and agencies actually do something about protecting the public. I would rather say that all relevant offices and agencies, et cetera, take forceful and effective action to protect, to protect the public safety.
To do further for the.
That's fine.
And forceful and effective.
Yeah.
Instead of do something.
For forceful and effective action, I like that.
And then it is.
Take forceful and effective action to protect the public safety and the environment. And I would say, taking out instead of just issuing press releases, I would just simply say, in addition to the issuance of press releases. So that it would read that the town board demands all relevant offices and agencies, et cetera, take forceful and effective action to protect the public safety and the environment in addition to the issuance of press releases.
Yep.
Got it.
Reads.
Thank you for all good comments. Any other thoughts? So I would urge, if you guys are okay with this, that we adopt this tonight in advance of.
Yeah.
The rally this weekend and frankly, I think.
We'll send this, yes, sort of like copy to, I'm.
To all those people. Yeah.
The first whereas wastewater is one word. In the very first paragraph.
Yeah, waste water.
Can you, can you, can you pass a resolution subject to grammatical corrections? I mean, in case you notice something later on.
Sorry.
We have done similar things sometimes.
So that's.
And subformant substances.
We're on the road now.
Because they're not, you can correct commas and things like that.
And we do things like that, yeah.
Prove it, subject to approval, trans一个个substance.
Perfect.
We've gotta catch face to that.
All right. Um, the other thing I would propose we do, just given that it's, given its importance to the town, is I would propose reopening the public hearing for the master plan for Parks and Rec. And I would propose we open that on. Um, and I would propose we open that on, reopen that for March, for May sixteenth.
So we'll add a resolution to the uh list tonight?
Sure.
Yeah.
And remove the one.
Alright, we're taking out eight.
Right, so instead of adopting it tonight, I think we just reopen the public hearing.
Alright.
Okay.
So we'll go on to.
Alright, so I think uh unless there's anything else we need to discuss, we can move on to the resolutions.
Okay.
I will.
Indeed. Um, I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of six hundred and seventy four thousand dollars, hundred eighty two dollars and four cents listed on the summary AP check register and detailed voucher detailed report. All dated April twenty seventh, twenty twenty three. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Thursday, April twenty seventh, twenty twenty three. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And move to authorize payment of nine thousand three hundred and fifty thousand and, what, three hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars and seventy cents to the East of Hudson Watershed Corporation. Um, at two Route one sixty four, Suite Two Patters in New York. For the Town of Newcastle share of operations and maintenance for the year twenty twenty two, as per the invoice dated February seventeenth, twenty twenty three. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to accept the retirement of Thomas Jones from the position of part-time court attendant, effective April twenty seventh, twenty twenty three. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. And I move to authorize the hiring of Thomas Jones from the position of part-time court attendant at the hourly rate of forty dollars per hour, effective May fourth, twenty twenty three. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, I move to authorize the hiring of Lauren Sturm to the position of student intern within the Development Department for the total amount of three thousand dollars for six week period, effective June fifth, twenty twenty three. Second.
All in favor, Art?
Aye.
Rob, it's three thousand dollars? About fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah.
It's fifteen hundred dollars.
Fifteen hundred.
Do we need to, what what is the proceeding?
That it.
I just says amended.
Why don't you just uh move to amend the amount, make a resolution to fifteen.
Sure.
I just as a show Sabrina didn't hire her.
Okay.
I move to amend the amount of we are authorizing to
Usually the budget.
The student intern from three thousand to fifteen hundred dollars for six week period, effective June fifth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
All in favor, Art?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the C R E I committee to establish a social media presence as illuminated in the provisions below. Now therefore be it resolved that the town, do you want, did you want me to re-.
The best part.
Now therefore be it resolved that the town board hereby authorizes the C R E I to create and administer a Facebook page provided that the C R E I's use, such Facebook page shall conform with the town's social media and communication policy as amended and shall be consistent with the C R E I's goals and mission as established by the town board.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I appreciate it, that's good.
Yes. Um, okay, I move to authorize the award bid for D P W twenty twenty three dash O two. Purchase and installation of replacement roof for the Chapala Performing Arts Center to armored type construction port for the total amount of three hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred dollars, which is comprised of the base bid of four hundred and forty four thousand, two hundred dollars minus sixty three thousand, five hundred dollars, which is a deduction of alternate bid number one.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Let me skip eight.
Ah, okay.
Oh, but do you have a resolution add that we can put in place of that? I moved to adopt the following resolution, um, to reopen the public hearing on the recreation and parks master plan of the Town of Newcastle for Tuesday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty three, at the Town of Newcastle Town Hall at seven thirty P M or as soon thereafter, as reached on the town board agenda that evening.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Um, and I moved to authorize the approval of the parking area license agreement with Kiwi Operating Co. LLC, effective June twenty sixth.
I don't think I would sign that one, that one.
So we're.
I think we're. I think mine or not.
How sorry about that, yes.
We're gonna do the.
Do not.
Your opinion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry about that. Uh, I move to authorize the addition of a one hundred dollar fee per day for the use of Getney Park, Getney parking lot to be added to the Recreation and Parks Master Plan schedule for twenty twenty three.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. I move to authorize authorize the closing Whitwell Close to be house number twenty three dash thirty for neighbor block party to play Saturday, May sixth, twenty twenty three from one P M to five P M.
Second.
All in favor?
I moved to authorize the disbursement of fund in the amount of seven hundred dollars plus sixty eight dollars, forty cents in gift card activation fees for a total of seven hundred sixty eight dollars, forty cents to the Holocaust and Human Rights Committee co-chairs, which represents a prize money for two thousand twenty three Holocaust Human Rights Writing and Arts Contest to be remitted to the winners. This will be funded through boards and commission budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. I move to declare the following vehicles surplus and utilizing the professional services of Auction International as illuminated below.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, who would like to read this?
Are you ready? Welcome.
You guys.
Okay.
Here, would you want to look at the changes?
Um, I I wrote them.
Okay.
I move, uh, I move to adopt the resolution in opposition to the discharge of contaminated water into the Hudson River. Whereas Holtech International, the company decommissioning the Indian Point Nuclear Power Plant has announced its intention to release radioactive wastewater from onsite crew pools into the Hudson River. And whereas to date, there has been no specific reporting of the radio nuclei contents of this water, which is heavily contaminated from the storage of the nuclear fuel waste. And whereas pre-release filtration to remove these isotopes has been presented as a solution to reduce the content of these carcinogenic contaminants to a level as low as reasonably achievable. And whereas the National Academy of Science has indicated that there is no verifiable safe level of the of these isotopes, but they are ingested or inhaled and such pre-release treatment would not remove tritium, also carcinogenic, from the water. And whereas any contaminants in the Hudson River present the risk of entering the food chain. And whereas there are community members who depend on fish from the river as a food source. And in addition, there are seven communities upriver who source their drinking water from the Hudson River. And whereas, since the Hudson River is an estuary that flows from south to north as well as from north to south, this fact must be considered. And whereas the Hudson River also serves as a source of recreational activities and represents an economic resource that will be endangered by this reckless action. And whereas New York State Senate Bill um five fifty one eighty one and New York State Assembly Bill fifty three thirty eight has been introduced, enact to amend the environmental conservation law to prohibit the discharge of any radiological agent into the waters of the state, including by Holtech International or any other successor to the decommissioning of the Indian Point Nuclear Power Plant. And meeting violations with fines of twenty five thousand dollars per day, fifty thousand dollars per day for second violation and one hundred and fifty thousand dollars per day violation thereafter. And whereas we strongly support the prohibition on discharge of any radiological agents into our waters. And whereas we believe that the fines proposed in New York State Senate Bill fifty one eighty one and New York State Assembly Bill fifty three thirty eight are too low and would likely just be considered the cost of doing business, so the fines should be substantially increased. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the town board of the Town of Newcastle strongly opposes the plan to release over a million gallons of contaminated water from the Indian Point Nuclear Power Plant site into the Hudson River. And be it further resolved that the town board of the Town of Newcastle urges the passage of New York State Senate Bill fifty one eighty one and New York State Sen- New York State Assembly Bill fifty three thirty eight, enact to amend the environmental conservation law to prohibit the discharge of any radiological agent into the waters of the state. And urges the New York State Governor to sign such legislation and be it further resolved that when drafting and finalizing such legislation, the fines should be substantially increased so that they can have an actual deterrent effect instead of simply being considered the cost of doing business. And be it further resolved, the town board of the Town of Newcastle hereby demands that all relevant offices and agencies, including the Office of the Governor, the New York State Public Service Commission, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, the Indian Point Decommissioning Oversight Board, and any others involved in decommissioning Indian Point, take forceful and effective action to protect public safety and the environment instead of just issuing press releases. And be it further resolved, the town administrator of the Town of Newcastle is hereby authorized and directed to send a certified copy of this resolution to the Honorable Kathy Hopel, Governor of the State of New York, New York State Senator Pete Harcom, New York State Assemblyman Chris Burdick, New York State Assemblywoman Dana Levinburg, the Speaker of the New York State Senate and Assembly, the Majority and Minority Leaders of the New York State Senate and Assembly, the New York State Public Service Commission, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, the Indian Point Decommissioning Oversight Board, and to such other persons as the administrator in her discretion made improper in order to effectuate the purpose of this resolution.
A second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Aye.
Um, and one thing to note, I think May fourth is the last date to give public comment on this. So I I wanna make sure that's in two days, so we can send this resolution out tomorrow.
We'll get it. Yep.
And did we move to the public hearing that we, um, did we, did we decide?
Yeah.
I think we will.
The one for the charging speech? So, um.
Oh, the Trump, yeah, the Trump.
It was.
The nomination, yeah, the charging resolution.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I try.
Thank you.
The, you know.
Thank you.
I'm a cop.
That's with it. Alright, uh, I move uh instead of public hearing on both local laws in town for one twenty three dash thirty two regarding electronic hybrid car charging for Tuesday, May sixteenth, about thirty three. At the Town of Newcastle Town Hall, seven thirty P M or soon thereafter, as reached on the town board agenda that evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, can we entertain a motion to adjourn?
Someone. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.